I want to say that, remember, there's three main parts of our 911 center. There's the phone systems, the calls coming in. There are CAD systems, computer aided dispatch, where we manage every call. And the computer certainly aids in identifying Main Street and Seligian versus Main Street and Copley, or something like that. And then, of course, the radio. The radio systems are probably the most expansive part of the 911. Our consolidation, our regionalization focused on the phones and the CAD. The radio, there are still four systems, and there will be four systems, until we have further direction from the Commonwealth on a new generation 911 communication system, which may in fact be something similar to what the state police use now. The reason why we're waiting is because of the price tag. These are tens of millions of dollars in expense from towers all the way through the handheld devices that you might see on the scene by a fireman or a policeman, or what you might see in a police vehicle. Therefore, it's extremely important that we get that right, because the impact on expense to the communities would be severe. We manage that by creating a radio dispatch that can accommodate all four systems, which is really a neat way of approaching this. Pima allowed us to spend a few dollars more, because we're incorporating software and the ability to communicate with four radio systems from one council. It may seem easy to do, it's never really been done, because there would be no need to do it. But if you're ever going to consolidate, and the most expensive part is radio, then this certainly becomes a solution to allow Pima to explore further consolidations in the Commonwealth. And I'm happy to say again, they did that, they worked with us on it, and they've been extremely happy to see that we're able to accommodate this particular part of operating a 911 center. So Commissioners, November 4th, December 3rd, and July 1st, 2019. Significant things for us.
Thank you, Rick. We have about two minutes before the next committee starts. So if there's any questions from, I'll open this up to all the Commissioners at this point, but I would advise if there's anything that you can address to Rick about this, outside of this meeting, that you approach him yourself. So I'll open up until you read questions. Any questions? Commissioner Holt.
Not really a question, but could we have the presentation sent to the floor now?
Oh, absolutely. I'll send it to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holt. Any other questions? For the record, I'd like to note that Commissioner Brown joined us earlier in the presentation. So hearing others, thank you, Rick, for the presentation.
Thank you.
And this meeting stands to adjourn.
That brings us to the opening of the Cedarbrook Committee for tonight. Mr. Hanaw, Commissioner Holt is here.
Good evening, Jason Camello, Assistant Nursing Home Administrator of Cedarbrook. We are seeking approval for an amendment to our contract with Care Alternatives of Pennsylvania, which does business as Ascend Hospice. This was originally a standard 2-1-1 agreement, started November 1st of 16, with options, of course, you know, to renew for two additional one-year terms. This vendor has provided more than satisfactory service. You know, what that means is that as a hospice, they come out very expediently when called. The nursing staff really enjoys working with them. They're very attentive to the residents and the families, because that's an important component of hospice as well, to help the family cope with their situation, and then subsequently, after the resident passes, they have an obligation to perform some grieving support services following that. This is a zero-cost-to-county contract. The residence insurance is billed for this service, and again, we're seeking approval for this amendment.
Jason, this is becoming pretty routine, there's no reason not to renew this contract. But as I was thinking about this the last few days, it struck me what a difficult job this could be. Did they ever have problems, and it's kind of like, I'm thankful that there are people that will provide this kind of service, did they ever have problems filling these jobs? Or are there enough of those kind of folks to go around?
Any organization that employs our ends has difficulty filling positions at this point in the cycle, you know, of the economy and specifically that field. But yeah, it's a very difficult position to be in, because of course, the cycle of life at that point, you're constantly having to grieve yourself as a caregiver, I would imagine, in that type of role.
Kind of could be a depressing job.
Yes, yeah. And you have to be a very strong person to then be able to support the families as well.
I'm glad we can, but sort of questions or comments from anyone on the floor? Questions or comments from the public? Do we hear a motion to forward for the positive recommendation to the full board? And we have two of those. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that quickly concludes our business. Cedarbrook Committee for tonight.
Thank you. That brings us to the Courts and Corrections Committee, and we're starting on a time of 6:40. I'd like to just introduce very briefly the board, Public Defender Jim Cole, who were not trying to introduce, everybody knows her, but she's specifically here this evening to talk about four resolutions related to her responsibilities. Kim?
Thank you. I'm here for, the first item that is listed is approving an amendment to a professional services agreement with Caporal Court Reporting. This was, this was a contract that we had a, it's an extension of a contract from the previous year. It's court reporting services, which basically are used when we have preliminary hearings. We only use it for preliminary hearings in serious felonies, homicide cases, or cases that have particular facts to them that we believe we need to have a court report. So it's just an extension of that contract.
Thank you. Any questions from committee members? Other board members? Public? I'll entertain a motion for positive recommendation to the full board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Hartzell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The second item is approving a professional services agreement with Frank DiTilio. Frank DiTilio is a forensic psychologist that we use in a variety of different cases in our office. We can use them in homicide cases, in death penalty cases, we can use him in a wide variety of cases when we believe that there might be a mental health defense, or even a mental health issue that we think needs to be addressed. He's been working with our office for many, many years. The contract is not to exceed $30,000.
Any questions from committee members? Comments? Any other board members? And from the public? Someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Positive recommendation to the full board?
Yes.
Question by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Hartzell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The third item is approving a professional services agreement with Court Consultation Services of Mid-Hudson. This is a mitigation specialist. I've been before the board before, talked about mitigation specialists. We use mitigation specialists in death penalty cases. It's actually required that we use them in death penalty cases. We are also using them now in cases involving the juvenile lifers, sort of the slang term that we call it, but the juveniles who were sentenced to life without the possibility of parole, and the Supreme Court has determined that they have the right to a hearing and can be a mandatory sentence. And so we use these mitigation specialists for that purpose as well, and this contract is not to exceed 42,000.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions or comments from committee members? Any board members? Commissioner Doherty?
This may have been discussed previously, but isn't there anybody locally who can do this, since we have to pay mileage fees from New York for them to come down?
Right. There are not a lot of mitigation specialists, believe it or not. There really aren't. There are, there was another mitigation specialist who the Public Defender's Office had used before I became chief. They were very unhappy with that person's services, and that's why they went out to, Louise Luck is the individual who owns a particular company. She is very highly regarded, and I really haven't found anybody that I believe is up to her level of expertise in this area. To be perfectly honest, she also works with Northampton County, she works with Carbon County, she works with all of our surrounding counties. So it's not just us that are, you know, getting somebody from New York. Unfortunately, it's a very specialized area, and there's just not a lot of them. And I go to different, I go to death penalty seminars where they bring in mitigation specialists, and New York isn't the furthest one, you know, there's people from all over the country that come, because there's just not a lot of them.
And also, considering the juvenile lifers, is this enough money to cover what you're going to be facing?
Yes, because what we are trying to do, what we have done in certain of them, we don't have a lot of them, first of all. We, at this point, we don't have a lot of them. We have reached agreements on some of them, so we haven't had the need to use her, and she's already done some work on other cases, so, you know, as we're getting through the system, I think that amount will be fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Doherty. Any other questions? Kim, only because we're moving along very quickly.
Sure.
You've been so good in the last several years in helping our board understand some aspects of what you do. One mitigation expert, how much time, let's say physically, with the person, the defendant in this case? How much time would that entail? I mean, and what's the process? I'm sure there's interviews involved?
Sure. There's interviews, not just with the defendant, but there's interviews with relatives of the defendant, there could be interviews with schoolteachers of the defendant, with anybody who has had a connection with the defendant. They spend time going through all kinds of different documents, so medical documents, psychological documents, sometimes they're going through school yearbooks, because that yearbook might, they might discover something in that yearbook, which leads them down a different path to find something. And here's my opponent over here, listening to all the tricks of the train wheel, I'm sure he understands.
No one!
They know them all anyway, that's right. So, but no, those are the kinds of things that they do. What I do to keep our costs down, to be perfectly honest, is, we get our own records. I don't have my mitigation act, I don't pay her to retrieve documents that we could get. We have an investigator, we have two investigators, our investigators get our documents. Our attorneys do a lot of that late work, so that saves on a lot of the money and time. You know, sometimes mitigation experts will say, "Well, I need to fly down to Puerto Rico, for example, to interview somebody." And I say, "No, you can call them over the phone and interview them." So we do have a lot of control, I maintain a lot of control over what they do, and nothing is approved without a supervisor, first has to sign off on that, and then I have a final to sign off.
Great, thank you. James, any other questions, comments? Anyone from the public?
I just want to clear up one thing. I was before this board asking for more money for psychiatrists in some of the juvenile lifer cases. And while she is correct, and we have disposed of her, I recently set bills in fiscal for 17,000 and 20,000. So, based on mitigation experts, we have to hire psychiatrists, we love that. And that's not just Public Defenders, private councils as well.
Let's just pity them.
Margaret? What was that?
I was talking to her.
Oh.
Well, thank you. Actually, that rounds out the process real fast. It is the process, right?
Right, that's absolutely the process, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Is there a recommendation someone would like to make on the committee? Commissioner Brown?
With a positive.
Second.
In second by Commissioner Sanelli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the last item is approving a professional services agreement with Robert Gordon, he's also a psychologist. There are times when we need different psychologists for different reasons. There's also conflicts sometimes that psychologists might have. We actually had a situation with Dr. DiTilio where there were co-defendants, and he had been involved in assessing one of those defendants, who was not our client, so he therefore could not be involved with our client. So we do have the need to have additional psychologists that we can go to, for a variety of reasons. We've had a contract with Dr. Gordon for a long time. His contract is not to exceed 50,000. And Dr. DiTilio also, because he's extremely busy, he sort of limits what he does for us to really our serious cases, our homicide cases. Doesn't really do many of the routine evaluations that we need to have done. That's more what Dr. Gordon does.
Thank you. Any's local?
Any's local.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Hartzell?
And is that last description explain the pretty wide change in what they charge?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Sanelli?
Has Dr. Gordon always practiced, or has he relocated? It's a common name, I'm just curious.
As far as I know him, he's been here for, I've been the chief maybe about five years, so as far as I know, during that time, he's always been here. I don't know if he's been anywhere else.
He's been here forever.
Okay.
I remember him as one of the local, the worst. Wild pilot.
All right, okay. So he does not have the history of staying in the chair seat? No. Not, again, not that I, I mean, not that I know of, I don't know him to be, hasn't practiced anywhere. Okay, you're, that's virtually right.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanelli. Any other questions?
Yes.
Comments? Anyone from the public? Is your motion for approval, for recommendation?
So moved, with a positive.
Seconded by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Sanelli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to ask the board if you feel that Kim needs to stay for a full meeting or not.
Thank you very much.
Unless she wants to be entertained.
I think, well, I'm not sure entertainment is the word we used for our last meeting, but she's probably ready to go home.
Their usual, their usual value here.
Thank you. Now, the next item for Courts and Corrections is related to a resolution, which I know has been shared with the board. Our district attorney, Jim Martin, is here as well, as well as the director of the RIC Center, Julie Cosus, and they'd like to talk to us a little bit about an opportunity that we could help them with. Jim?
Thank you very much. I think first procedurally, I've got to ask respectfully for a waiver of sort of rules regarding the kindliness of this resolution coming before you.
You do, Jim, and we have one prepared that I would be prepared to make at the full meeting, Jim.
All right, thank you, Kim. You, I'm sure will remember that several years ago, the Northampton County Chiefs of Police Association, the sheriff, obtained a grant through the Northampton County Gaming Authority, the amount of $407,000, which was used to integrate the data from 26 police departments in Northampton County into the regional intelligence investigations. That sort of conflict. At the time, the, that, and only recently a conflict, because it took some hot, not to really call bars, or for a variety of reasons. But in any event, at the time that grant was sought, it was the expectation of the Chiefs of Police and the sheriff of Northampton County, that they would be coming back to the Gaming Authority for continuing recurring expenses. Unfortunately, there was a sprint court case that involved a casino in the Poconos, names escaped you from.
Down there.
Thank you. That's why I bring her along. Which resulted in a Supreme Court holding that the casino fee, post fee that was being paid was unconstitutional. Recently, the Gaming Authority of Northampton County went out of existence. Some of the funds that previously flowed to that Gaming Authority now go into a thing called the Commonwealth Financing Authority, or CAFD. We are applying for a grant to help offset the operating expenses of the RIC on behalf of both Lehigh County and Northampton County. And what we, that grant, we just found out about September, in the process of completing the applications, we learned that we needed letters of support from county executive, which we obtained, from me as district attorney, which we obviously obtained. But we need a support, a resolution of support from this body, the governing body of Lehigh County. So that's why we're here this evening, asking for you to adopt the resolution that's been prepared by the Department of Law, which I think is self-explanatory.
Thank you very much, Jim. Any questions from committee members? Other members in the board? Any comments? Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I think it might be appropriate for your full board's ownership on this resolution.
Absolutely, if individual members are willing to do that.
Yes.
Absolutely, I mean, I can sponsor it.
Mr. Hart, would you please now get the whole board response to this resolution?
So noted, and Chairman Osteen at the appropriate time of the full board, meaning I'll ask for a motion from Commissioner Hartzell.
All right, thank you very much. May I be excused from the full board meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. I would like to mention one, actually, comment, but before we do that, is there a motion for a positive recommendation to the full board? So, Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Sanelli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jim, before you go, I wanted to, and Julia, I wanted to just mention, for those of us who may not have seen it in Oracle Media here this week, I believe, it says, "Lehigh County Task Force gets award for working stopping game violence." And this is exactly one of the things that the RIC Center is, I know is deeply involved in, as well as other members of the task force. So I wanted first of all to acknowledge, you know, have everyone be aware of that, and also thank you for the work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Julia, who obviously does the work.
And answer our district attorney's questions, okay, if they don't appear before the court session. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My wife appreciates it.
Okay, that closes the Business and Courts and Corrections Committee at 6:55.
All right, well, next, we're a little early. Mr. Mulchany, will you be filling in for Mr. King, by any chance, with the appointment of Mrs. McMahon?
No.
Okay.
See, I like your answer. That was a funny answer.
Well, Frank said he would be here at 7:05, so.
He said you was not going to be here until then.
Oh, he's not?
And that's why he mentioned, he actually mentioned you were K.
Oh.
I don't know her.
That's okay, so.
Sorry.
That's okay. Not a problem. All right. I guess we'll just move on, then. I'll bring the Governance Committee to order at 6:54. On our agenda tonight, there's only one item. It's for the Aging and Adult Services Advisory Council appointment, Mary Katie McMahon, term expiring 10/31/22. And just briefly, Mary is, was a place employment with BB Ministries, she's a senior vice president of healthcare services. She has over 40 years of experience in healthcare-related positions, and she's very knowledgeable and understands the challenges seniors face with the age and health, psychological, psychosocial, and wellness needs they have. So I just wanted to, also, I think, Commissioner Holt, did you know her, or do you have some, you want to mention anything?
I was just seeing the discussion of the conflict related to my appointment.
Okay. Got it. So with that said, any questions from the committee and the full board?
I have a question, but I just want to say that this is certainly a qualified interview to the board, certainly a miscapacity. I mean, we have a number of senior, and in the Kennedy facilities here in Lehigh County, and BB is pretty well-regarded in just about all respects. So when one of their senior vice presidents takes herself available, I think we could be foolish enough to accept that offer.
Commissioner Brace, would you like to make a positive recommendation, then?
Yes, I'd make a positive recommendation.
And I hear second, Mr. Hartzell, Commissioner Hartzell, second. This discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With one's, yes, sir. Sorry. So it's 3:01. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You can travel.
You can, if you want.
Don't go anywhere, we are 7:15, what's in here?
Everybody got it on the bar, and that was on.
You could. I hear your test. Drink you four now. I'll play the whiskey. Oh, that's good. I got it, Rick. You don't have any. I'm kidding. I told no man that I don't rush to do it, but I meant do it, you know?
So the last email that I sent, he has a subscription.
Why wait, because he doesn't respond to people who are racist?
The king of freedom from Hitler was Bush.
The king of freedom from Hitler was Bush.
Yeah. Could you see that?
Yeah, it was on the fourth film. I don't think so. I know it's not, because I've been sitting through these meetings for years. I paid attention, I think a lot. Joe Hillier from South Alabama, he wasted an extra hour and a half.
It's a problem.
Problem.
You're being nice.
Well, I'm just saying, like, just the time that we extended the meeting time, maybe it could hurt.
Before we get started, I'd ask our clerk to please take the roll.
Commissioner Brace?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Doherty?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Osteen?
Here.
Commissioner Hartzell?
Authority. The county has received funds from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency to partner with the Housing Authority for blighted remediation. The amount of the grant is one hundred thousand dollars. Ordinance approval is required pursuant to section six ten of the Administrative Code.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor. Sponsor comments, Commissioners Brace, Cincinnati. Would I add anything?
This is partly an effort of some of the work that the staff in Lehigh County's Community and Economic Development Office have done over the last couple of years as it relates to blighted remediation. They've worked with municipal officials to bring forward a plan that they, they helped to form, and one of the items that was identified specifically was technical assistance and implementation of lighted property remediation, especially outside of the city of Allentown, city of Allentown, some of our smaller rural townships. So, this is an effort to address some of the recommendations that came with that plan, and to work with the municipalities to implement it. It's a drop in the bucket to the total ease for the county, but it, we've got to start somewhere. And I'm glad to see that the county is going to be a partner, not only with housing authority, but with municipality and seeing this.
Thank you, Commissioner Brace. Commissioner Cincinnati?
I'd just like to remind the public that there is a need to land restrictions, and these will be under occupied when that property is completed. And I believe that is key when we have these connected projects, so that is why I'd like my support.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Any public input? All those in favor approving Commissioner Bill two thousand eighteen dash twenty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Bill passes. Moving along, Bill two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce that bill?
Commissioner Bill two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine adopting the two thousand nineteen Lehigh County budget and amending the job classification and pay plans for consistency with the two thousand nineteen budget, sponsored by Commissioner Dockry.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
By disordines, the Board of Commissioners adopts the two thousand nineteen Lehigh County budget. The budget consists of exhibits A, B, and C, and approved amendments in exhibit D. Job classification and pay plan changes are set forth in exhibit E. Ordinance approval is required pursuant to sections three ten and seven oh four of the Home Roll Charter.
Thank you. Sponsor comments, Commissioner Dockry.
Yes, I hope we see the end of the tunnel here tonight and get this approved, because we had three nights of vote hearings and had department heads come in. We had two public hearings, the second of which was tonight, and taking public comments on the budget. And on October tenth, we passed a number of amendments of the budget, so pardon me. So, we, we have the second reading and final approval hopefully tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dockry. Any other Commissioner comments on Bill two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine? Any public input? Mr. Clerk, would you please take a roll, call both, on Bill two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine?
Commissioner Brace?
Now.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Dockry?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartzell?
Yes.
Commissioners Cincinnati?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I've recorded six votes in favor and three votes opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes. Mr. Clerk, let's move on to our resolutions. You introduce Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-three.
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-three approving an amendment to the professional services agreement with Care Alternatives of Pennsylvania LLC, doing business as Ascend Hospice, sponsored by Commissioner Hartzell.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
By this resolution, the Board of Commissioners approves an amendment to the agreement with Ascend, Ascend Hospice. The purpose of the amendment is to extend the term of the contract for an additional year and to add required contract language. Proposed amendment is attached to the resolution as exhibit A, and resolution approval is required to amend a previously approved agreement.
Thank you. Sponsor comments, Commissioner Hartzell?
To service far superior, hospice service for our superior residents.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments on Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-three? Any public comment? Hearing none, and all those in favor approving Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next resolution?
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-four approving an amendment to a professional services agreement with Caporal Court Reporting, sponsored by Commissioner Hartzell.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
By this resolution, the Board of Commissioners approves an amendment to the agreement with Caporal Court Reporting. The purpose of the amendment is also to extend the term for an additional year and to add the required contract language.
Thank you. Sponsor comments, Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Chairman Osteen. This resolution and the next three are all presented earlier this evening by our public defender, Kim Holt. Basically, what it's designed to do, each of these resolutions is give our public defender the tools that she needs to perform her job in the criminal justice system. So, with that, our board approved the specifics about these resolutions and contracts, and each one of these, this and the next three, have come to the full board with positive recommendation from the Courts and Corrections Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Osborne. Any other Commissioner comments? Any public input? All those in favor approving Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next resolution?
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-five approving a professional services agreement with Frank M. Vitellio, Ph.D., A D P P, sponsored by Commissioner Osborne.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
The purpose of this agreement is to provide psychological and expert witness services for the office of the public defender. The proposed agreement is attached to the resolution as exhibit A. Resolution approval is required for professional service agreements in excess of ten thousand dollars pursuant to section eight oh one point one of the Administrative Code.
Thank you. Sponsor comments, Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Chairman Osteen. No further comments.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Any public input? All those in favor approving Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, the next resolution, please.
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-six approving a professional services agreement with Court Consultation, Court Consultation Services of Mid Hudson, sponsored by Commissioner Osborne.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
The purpose of this agreement is to provide capital homicide litigation services for clients of the office of the public defender. Resolution approval is required because the agreement is in excess of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Sponsor comments, Commissioner Osborne?
No further comment, thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Any public input? All those in favor approving Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next resolution?
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-five approving a professional services agreement with Frank M. Vitellio, Ph.D., A D P P, sponsored by Commissioner Osborne.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
The purpose of this agreement is to provide psychological and expert witness services for the office of the public defender. The proposed agreement is attached to the resolution as exhibit A. Resolution approval is required for professional service agreements in excess of ten thousand dollars pursuant to section eight oh one point one of the Administrative Code.
Thank you. Sponsor comments, Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Chairman Osteen. No further comments.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Any public input? All those in favor approving Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, the next resolution, please.
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-six approving a professional services agreement with Court Consultation, Court Consultation Services of Mid Hudson, sponsored by Commissioner Osborne.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
The purpose of this agreement is to provide capital homicide litigation services for clients of the office of the public defender. Resolution approval is required because the agreement is in excess of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Sponsor comments, Commissioner Osborne?
No further comment, thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Any public input? All those in favor approving Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next resolution?
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-seven approving a professional services agreement with Robert M. Gordon, Ph.D., A D P P, sponsored by Commissioner Osborne.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
The purpose of this agreement is to provide psychological and expert witness services to the office of the public defender. Resolution approval is required because the agreement is in excess of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Sponsor comments?
No further comment, thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Any public input? All those in favor approving Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Mr. Clerk, I believe we need a motion for the next resolution, is that correct?
We do. We have a motion from Commissioner Osborne to suspend the votes of the board to consider Resolution number two thousand eighteen dash sixty-eight, supporting the application for a grant to the Commonwealth Financing Authority Local Share Account for the Office of the District Attorney, which is sponsored by the Board of Commissioners. That motion we need a second.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioners Cincinnati?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dockry. All in favor of the motion, signify by say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, would you please introduce the motion, Mr. Clerk?
Same comment, Stan. I'll defer to the Solicitor for summary.
By this resolution, the Board of Commissioners indicates its support for grant application from the office of the District Attorney. The grant would provide funding for the Regional Intelligence and Investigation Center, also known as the RIC. The grant is being requested in the amount of one million dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority's local share account, which handles revenues from table games and slots.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor. Sponsor comments? This was sponsored by the entire board, but I'll ask Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you. We heard, thank you, Chairman Osteen, we heard from the district attorney and the director of the Brick Center earlier this evening in committee detailing the importance of the Brick Center itself, fighting crime, especially the pain violence. And it's come to the full board with the positive recommendation.
Thank you. Any other sponsor comments or Commissioner, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Holt?
Yeah, I think that this request would be an appropriate use of the grant fund that is coming out of the new structure that has been a previous result of the Supreme Court decision. And so, this is a new way of sort of distributing the funds, and I've always considered it would be appropriate for the RIC to be receiving funds through the gaming revenue. I'm happy to see that they have the opportunity to apply and that they are successful in receiving the full grant.
Thank you, Commissioner Holt. Any other Commissioner comments? Any public input? All those in favor approving Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Any committee reports this evening? Any Commissioner announcements? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Chairman Osteen. I just wanted to mention to everybody in the audience and also for the full board, in the budget process, one of the things that was not adequately addressed, in my opinion, was the difference in pay between supervisors and those who report to them. That distance was not addressed in this budget. It was raised in the leadership meeting and provided a summary by, Commissioner Brace provided a summary for that. So, I would like to encourage the administration to continue working with our board in defining exactly how many people are affected by this topic, and what, what would take if the board were fomentable to remedy that this year.
Thank you, Chairman Osteen. Thank you, Commissioner Osborne. Any other Commissioner, Matt, announcements? Any citizens input? For chairman?